May into order. March twenty-third, all three selectmen are present, town administrators present, according for the citizens of Dunbar, Mr. Lee Martell, thank you, Lee. And we have three members of the public. Okay, gentlemen, I have some minutes from last week. I'm going to make a motion to accept the regular meeting minutes of March sixteenth, twenty twenty-three.
I'll second that.
Okay, any discussion, gentlemen, on those minutes? I, as a, again, Lee, she's doing a great job, in my opinion.
Very good, yeah.
And the fact she self, found her mistake and she called us back and sent you another card is fantastic. Gentlemen, all in favor?
Aye.
Okay, going to open for public comment, if you haven't been here, public comment is where we, if you're not on the agenda, you can, if you want to share something with us, you're welcome to do so. So I'm going to public comment, please, and back row, sir.
I'm on your gen.
Understood, sir. Back row, okay? And you're on the gentleman's.
Yeah.
All right, Cole's public comment, bring it back to the board. Gentlemen, Lori, if you'd come on up. Okay. This is Lori Rulo.
Rulo.
Rulo just recently moved from Goffstown to Dunbar. Welcome to the town. She wants to join the Dunbar Recreation Commission. And I asked her to come in and introduce herself to us, so I helped introduce you, so.
Thank you.
She was lost in the hallway, so I just bailed her out, you might say. The Recreation Committee is budgeted, where we had it budgeted for many, many years, minimal. And at one point in this town, it was, it was only limited to like a bus ride to Boston for about half the town, I mean, a few people from Dunbar and double them out from Goffstown. And we paid for it. And that kind of like fell by the wayside and we have a, we have a line item for it, but we put little dollars for it for the last couple of years. But we added some dollars this year, so we look forward to any ideas you may have. And I'll let you work with the committee. The only thing is, we like to have it for all members of the committee, of the town, from young to the senior citizen. And if you have ideas, make it so different things can be applicable to those all age groups, not just the one isolated, or all the one of those. And that's, so I say, welcome aboard, and thank you for volunteering for the committee. Any comments, gentlemen?
Nope.
Thank you very much for volunteering, if you're on that day.
Can I just say that what he's explaining there is a very small budget line of a thousand dollars set aside for recreation. But you guys do have your revolving fund, which you guys established about seven or eight years ago, and you have the authority to do what you need to do with that.
Okay.
As a committee.
As a committee, so that the two girls that have been working with it have been first on it, they're very good about making sure that they get double signatures, approvals, and whatnot, so.
Okay.
You'll enjoy working with them, because we enjoyed having them stop in the office, so it's been good.
Great, thank you.
Make a motion to accept Lori Rulo.
Rulo.
Rulo. As a member of the Dunbar Recreation Commission, term ending March twenty twenty-four.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
We have the paperwork, so if you see Jen, Jennifer the way out, maybe it's morning time, so we save you time.
Yeah.
I'll let Ken carry the paperwork down to her.
I can do that.
Thanks, Ken, for volunteering.
Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you.
It's nice to meet you. Thank you.
Okay. Next on the agenda, I have Gary Boss.
That'd be me.
You want to come up, sir, or is your good neighbor?
I'd come down here, it's up to you guys.
How we, we don't have to yell at each other long distances.
And your name is?
Gary Boss.
Oh, come here.
Come here, and is on the same subject, or separate?
No, I'm just, I'm just here.
As a separate, oh, okay. And how do you pronounce last name?
C.A.M.I.R.E.
Come here.
Yeah.
Okay, got it.
Did you need something?
She already left, so do you want her still?
I'll keep that in, so it's open Monday through Thursday, don't come on a Friday.
Yeah, okay, thank you.
Okay. So I, we were trying to catch her, but we missed her by the hour.
No worries, thank you, appreciate it.
Okay, Gary, get the floor.
Okay, I'll try not to take up too much of your time. My name is Gary Boss, I live down sixty-second old, sixty-two old Hopkinton Road. The reason I wanted to get on the agenda was, I wanted to voice my opinion about the town meeting, of it, why it was being held due to, with the inclement weather that was going on. My thoughts on that, I like to go to town meetings, I like to be able to voice my opinion, I like to have my vote counted. I don't think thirty-five people out of three thousand is a good representation for a town meeting. The weather was bad, my driveway was plugged, the roads were clogged, I don't have a four-wheel drive vehicle that sits up above the level of snow. The governor gave you guys the opportunity to postpone the meeting for safety concerns. The news, every five minutes, was saying if you don't need to be on the highway, don't be there. I think it was a bad call for safety reasons. I think it should have been postponed, it wouldn't have hurt nothing. And I think in the future that if the meetings are going to be held regardless of what the weather is, then I think the selectmen are disregarding the safety of the community, and in so doing so, I think you should accept some responsibility if someone gets hurt on the way into it. Now, I know that's way out in left field someplace, but, but think about it, you guys have the option to postpone it.
We actually don't.
I'm sorry?
We actually don't.
Who does?
The town moderator sets the meeting, he's here the week before the meeting, goes over it with us, and he was here right after the meeting, because we had a town, we had a selectman's meeting right after it, so. Town moderator sets that, he looks at the weather, adjusts all that. You know, some of these storms, they call for a big storm, and it ends up being a smaller storm, it's hit or miss, he made a decision, he stuck with his decision, and as a selectman, I'm going to back our town moderator, because that's a volunteer position, it's a hard position to be in, and sometimes you make a decision in life and you got to stick with it and go with it, and I can tell you, I've been a selectman, this is my third term. The first year I got voted in, twenty-four inch storm. Three years after that, I was up for reelection again, guess what we had, a twenty-inch storm. This year I was up for reelection again, and I think we had close to twenty, twenty-two inches here in the center of town, it was less down by where I live, maybe twelve or fourteen on East Dunbar Road. I think the roads were terrible, we all agree with you on that. It's easy to say after the fact, you know, when we saw how bad it was, certainly, but the day before and the days leading up to it, listening to the news and listening to the news changing, the town moderator made a decision, and when you're a public official kind of in a town, you're trying to do the best you can for the townspeople. He made a decision, as I just stated, every year I've been up for election, we've had large storms like that, never once have our town delayed a town meeting on those dates. So I'm just giving you a little background, I do agree with you, after the fact, looking at the weather, looking at the trees in the road, the wires down the driveways, the roads, the town, the state, nobody could keep up with the storm. After the fact, I agree with you a hundred percent, but the fact is, that decision was made before that, and I'm going to back our town moderator and stand behind him on that position.
Good for you, and you should, but sometimes one of decisions made, and you have to stick with it.
Right.
It's okay to admit you made a bad decision.
Oh, I agree with you a hundred percent.
And that was a bad decision, you know? Well, I said, thirty-five out of three thousand doesn't represent an accurate town meeting.
But saying it was a bad decision the day after, when you can't do anything about it, is kind of like after the fact, that's all. When he made the decision, it was the best decision he thought he could make, and I stand behind him on that. In regards to the weather, I look back at, the thing is, if you look at the public hearings that were held for the school board and the public hearing we held for our budget, for the public, for school board, that's where we really, even getting to the nitty-gritty of the budget, really challenge the elected officials on what they're presenting to the public. If I take my wife and myself out of the equation for the school board meeting, there were three people there from the town, three people, it was, I'm not counting the board, I'm counting my guests, to talk about the budget, which is three times higher than the town, and that was sad. Then I go to this, then I go to my budget, the thing is, I don't want to call it apathy, but there were, other than the officials, the officials of the departments, the department heads, there were no residents at my meeting to just say, there was almost apathy, like no one wanted even, it was a great day, it was a, maybe a week before, a week and a half before, no one wanted to come out and say boo about my budget, no one. And it kind of, kind of hurts when there's so much apathy, and so what I did, just so to keep the voters informed, I put the essential changes to our budget in the selectman's letter. And the thing is, you can, I really articulated quite well, I thought, so make it, I told it the way it was, and I, the first sentence, almost the first sentence or the first paragraph, I said, what's going on? Tax rates are going up, and I explained why. It's essentially the same philosophy I followed at the town meeting, I would have done the same whether it would be thirty people there or three hundred people there. And the thing is, I agree with Dave, yeah, if we, could have, would have, should have, but things, history passed itself, and I do note your concern. And the thing is, I think the moderator, who's, we have a new moderator in town, it's, we just newly elected, he was appointed and newly elected, I think he learned, he learned a little bit too, and I look forward to better years ahead, where we make, it's hard to challenge the weather and predict the weather, but I think he knows enough now that he won't be gun shy at all in the future, I'm positive, if he needed to cancel, he will. And so I'm, I'm confident that he'll always do the right thing. Yeah, some people may say it's a bad call, and the thing is, yeah, it is, but I agree, it's maybe a bad call, but I got to stand behind him and look forward to better decisions in the future. And so I, I got to.
I agree, and I didn't expect anything to change out of this, I just want, rather than whine in the background.
Well, I applaud, because.
You got my opinion now.
Because I see, I see the social media, the thing is, I, my wife pointed out to me, there's a little, little stuff going on on social media, I counted a number of people, it was about ten people complaining, and the thing is, if it's not, if it's not the election, next week it'll be the internet again. And the thing is, I.
You are right, this is the right avenue to comment, complain, and you know.
Well, make your, make your concern known, and the thing is, the concern is documented and it's on record now.
But you brought up the school board meeting, Linda pointed that out to me, asked me if I had attended that school board meeting, I said, no. And she said the weather was good and all this, well, when I skimmed through that book and I seen what was being proposed there, you know, and when the, the school board meeting was, I just kind of skipped over it, and the reason I did was because at a couple of the other town meetings, there have been items that were discussed and up for a vote that were specifically for the schools, a new boiler, number one, that was discussed. I thought the school board budget, once they proposed it and everything, came to the town people, be voted on, that's, that's my fault, okay? I'm getting schooled on this town committee.
Think a lot of, think a lot of people feel the same way, they think that we, we can adjust a lot more, but that, that whole budget, that end of that budget's there, so we can't affect it once they've decided on it.
And I, and I learned something else in this process of getting on your, on your agenda here, would it be possible for the selectmen at the town meetings, prior to going through the budget and everything, let the townspeople know, what happens if we don't pass this?
In fact, the town minister asked me the same question, we were discussing it the other day, if it's not passed, what happens?
Well, I mean, the way it's proposed, the town meetings I've been to, and I understand that a lot of monies go in to run in the community, but the way it's presented, it's like, oh my God, if we don't pass this, we're not going to have a police vehicle, we're not going to have, you know, lights, we're not going to have a boiler for the kids' heat, you know? What happens if we don't pass it?
They go to a default budget.
But I didn't know that, and I would venture to say, what if he people don't have it? And then, and then the question comes up, what exactly is the default budget?
Essentially, I, I, I understand this, but we spent the previous year with no increases.
That was my understanding, what it was explained, gentlemen. So could we get that at the next town meeting?
An explanation?
The presentation that if we don't pass this, this is what happens.
I, I, I'll put a sentence in there for that.
Thank you.
The thing is, you could do that on the entire budget, but when it comes to warrants, they stand on their own individually, so.
Warrants being.
There are, it's one warrant, each one has an article, the main, Article Four, which we, which we looked at, I think it was Article, the first article with the main budget, is the operating budget for our, for the town. And then thereafter, we have individual articles, like say for a police cruiser, for a capital reserve fund, there's little, little like, say, funds for maintaining, collecting money for, saving money for a fire department, saving money for the.
Capital reserve funds.
Those, if they're not voted on, you don't lose your entire budget that was voted on above, but you lose that warrant article, you know, if it doesn't pass, fails. And what we try to do, we, we go through those articles, and we try to recommend to, what we recommend our priorities should be, we may shift around, in other words, rather than increase the money, increase the taxes every year where we need more money, like, we'll, we'll subtract one line, add to the other line, and where we put, put money where the priorities are. And for example, right now, our priority is like, we've got a problem with our, with our fire department, our vehicles are getting long, getting old, and the thing is, they're going to need replaced, and fire department vehicles are not inexpensive. So we're looking at that as, what we don't want to do is stick the taxpayer with a huge tax increase for one fire vehicle, so we collect the capital reserve fund every year, and maybe the police got a new vehicle this year, next year we may not put as much money into the police fund or the transfer station vehicle, and we do stuff like that to warrants.
You said you don't want, the taxes don't go up every year?
No, I said, so we don't get a spike, in other words, if we never collected a dime for the capital reserve fund, and if I came to you and says I need to have a half a million dollars to buy a, two police, a police vehicle, or, or, excuse me, a police vehicle and a fire department truck in one year, that's going to be a, be a spike in your tax rate for one year. So with the capital reserve, it allows us to keep the, allows us to budget for the vehicle over time, so we keep your taxes fairly flat without having huge increases and spikes in taxes.
I was going to say, I have seen them go up every year.
Oh. Hey, Gary, you know we're on YouTube, so on our Dunbar website and on YouTube, you can get our meetings every week at your home, and we spend probably three or four or five meetings discussing that town budget before town meeting, and it comes generally those weeks before it, and you'll see us here discussing different things and what we agree upon, what we disagree upon, and at our budget, how much from surplus, and how much from excess revenues that we put back towards the tax you'll notice, of a four hundred ninety-seven thousand dollar increase, which included the road bond, we put three hundred fifty-eight thousand dollars worth of excess revenue and. Which is your money, but it backed towards. Back towards the taxes. So realistically, when you look at our budget, it was almost flat above and beyond that road bond, which is normally on a warrant article for a hundred thousand dollars, and this being our first year of the road bond, it was a little bit higher than that, a hundred thousand dollars, but the other years are going to go down subsequently, so. We try and keep our budget, I've been, this is my six years of selectmen, and our budgets have been almost flat all six of those years, as on the town side of it. So you got to separate that out, and that's why Mike was bringing up the school, because it's a larger part of the budget, but I will tell you, the schools' items are mostly fixed. If you get an additional kid, kid or special needs students, those costs are all fixed already and negotiated prior year, so. And one of the biggest costs we have, we send our high, high school children and middle school children to Bo, and they had, it was a price increase, and we have no choice but to send them to Bo. Now, Bo, if it gets too expensive, we can start looking around, the school board can look around for other avenues, but the thing is, every child we send, it's, what, twelve, is it twelve thou, it was, it was out there, it was a lot of money.
Eighteen, over eighteen.
No, no, it's eighteen, yeah.
Eighteen percent. Can I just comment also? You're talking to the board here, you're talking about the town's tax rate. If you want the same results for the local school, you need to talk to the school board, they meet on Wednesday nights, is it the third Wednesday of the month?
I'm not sure.
I don't follow it, but you really, contact the school and find out when the school board meets, because they meet every month, and you can present your concerns about the budget and what you just proposed to them, because they can't ask the school to do what they're doing, they're completely separate.
But one question about the school board, the money that's paid to Bo for the kids going to that high school.
Yeah.
Comes out of the tax dollars of the townspeople.
We have to raise it, we're, they're, they're responsible for raising the money.
Why isn't that shopped around for a signal?
They, they did shop that several years, we were at Goffstown for forty years, and then they shopped it, and if, I want to say, five years back or so?
Ten years already.
Ten years already, they made the decision to go to the town of Bo, and then they just renegotiated that last year, I think, for another ten years.
Fifteen years now.
Fifteen years.
But the contract's been amended so that in the event the townspeople say it's getting too expensive, or we don't, we can't afford this anymore, we can shop around.
I'm not sure what the cost of one of the junior colleges is, is down here for a year, but I think they could probably get by for under nineteen thousand dollars. And we're paying that, almost that for a high school student to go to Bo.
The thing is, the key, the key is getting to the budget season before they get to the meetings, before, before, once you get to the auditorium and it's, it's, pass the budget and the, the school board meeting, it's too late. You got to, you got to get into the budget season.
Well, it's not too late, if everybody in the room refused it or whatever, you could, you know, come up with a negative vote, but.
It's challenging.
It's challenging.
I think there's only been one on history.
I have one more comment, in the back.
Well, I've been waiting for a while, because the guy, the guy's kind of veered way the hell off this subject here. Three points, the first point I want to make is, these, all these meetings are online, you go on the town website, click on that meeting button, you can watch all these meetings, you can skip through them, you can watch whatever parts you want, or not watch any of them. So you can educate, everybody can educate themselves prior to voting, because this is all out there, plus they have a public meetings, budget meeting prior to the town meeting, so anybody can see what's going on. What I find is, nobody even cares, nobody watches, I might see like nine people watch them, and then, you know, but like you said, nobody comes to complain either, they complain on Facebook, like little kids, you know? So I think that's like ridiculous, so. The other point I want to make is what you said, Mike, is when nobody was at the school meeting, but that's the, that's the citizens' choice whether they want to go to that one or this one.
Absolutely.
So that's, point is moot, okay? You can't say, well, you didn't go to the other one, so what, what are you complaining about?
No, but I'm, what I'm saying.
Excuse me, that's what I'm saying.
It's a level of apathy or no interest in it.
Well, listen, okay, but you can't pull that card, because you guys shut down the meeting, I mean, kept the meeting going, people couldn't make it out their doors, they couldn't make it down the street, the plow guys were fighting, just prior to that meeting, the week before, I talked to the chief of police right here, and he said, we asked people to stay off the Rose Journals storms, and what you guys did was allowed everybody to run out in those storms, that's what you wanted. So you guys were wrong, and I know you said, John makes that decision, I'm sure of that, I am aware of that, but I'm sure he talked to you guys about it too. And the night before, if you watched the news, like everybody else did, they predicted very bad winds, heavy snows, very bad winds, possible power outages, I would have thought that you would have tried to make a decision towards being safe.
But you got to realize, there was, predicted that, he didn't make a decision, at least for Election Day.
Yeah.
By six P M.
It was published way before that, I was watching it.
At six P M, the day before, this is Monday at six P M, the, the weather forecast predicted eight to twelve inches, and that was it.
Well, I was watching the weather all that day, and they said, up to thirty inches, and they said possible power outages in this area.
Not during the day, I mean, if you look.
Oh, yes, oh, yes, they did.
I, I don't want to argue this, but the thing is, I know what I saw in the weather, I know what.
I'm telling you, they did, and I was watching it, because my daughter lives in Hillsborough, and theirs was predicted worse than ours.
Okay.
And I was keeping an eye on all of this.
I, I don't want to debate this, I think you're wrong.
No, I'm not wrong, and I'm telling you, right now, you guys should be apologizing to the public for this.
Okay, I don't want to, I don't want to go there, I would.
Well, you said.
If you look at how hard Goffstown got hit, how hard Weir got set, hit, wore right in the middle, I mean, it's pretty much kind of a no-brainer, I think, but it's overdone with it.
Yeah, but it's not bad to say, I made a mistake, I'm wrong. Maybe next year you'll think about it.
I'm not going to force, I'm not going to force the town moderator, he's going to reflect upon his decision, but I'm going to back the town moderator's decision.
I didn't say not to back him, because at this point you have to, you helped him make the decision, I'm sure.
And, and I said that at the beginning, you know, you should back the moderator and stick with his decision, just admit it was a bad decision, you know?
But what I'm going to tell you is, after the fact, it's easy to make, say I did the wrong decision, but when it's happened beforehand, moderator made the decision, and then you stick with it. If you were the town moderator and you made the decision two or three days before, I back you in what you decided to.
And after I realized I made a bad decision, the next day or the next week, I was coming out on this YouTube channel, we were sending flyers out saying, sorry, folks, I made a mistake.
And you, you have up to two hours before the meeting not to cancel it, you don't, I know, Trattier said, I had to do it at six A M., but the new law in two thousand and nineteen, my wife, I consented to you.
Right, but she, the thing is, there's two parts of the meeting, he, the voting day and then the town meeting, you're correct that he could move the town meeting at, two hours prior, but not the voting, the voting has to be done the day before. So there's two, two parts of the town meeting, one's the voting, the voting, he had, he had up until Monday at six P M., and he, he didn't make it based upon the current forecast.
Like you said, hindsight's twenty twenty, but, you know, seventy towns were canceling, all the towns were canceling, it's kind of, you know, I had twenty-six inches on Campbell Pond, and ninety, at early afternoon, ninety-seven percent of Dunbar was out of power, and I still had power, which is, but I, I lost it later, but so, it was actually at a hundred percent at one time, but, you know, hindsight's twenty twenty, but I don't, you know.
Well, I, I just hope I was to go forward from here, smarter decisions can be made, and we learn from the, from the least popular decision we made, and it probably wasn't a popular decision, but the thing is, I think we have to go forward from here and do the, what's best for the citizens of Dunbar, so.
I agree, and I got sidetracked on a lot of subjects here.
No, it's, no, it's okay, but the thing is, I think what Lee pointed out though is important, I think is, it's nice to be informed, and the thing is, take advantage, he does it out of, out of his, he doesn't get paid to do a, a nickel of his time here, he spends a lot of his Thursday evenings here, almost for the full year, he takes off a few weeks in the summer, but other than that, he spends a lot of time with us, and the thing is, you can learn a lot by how the town government works.
Well, I'll go out on a limb here and say that I think after December, there'll be a lot more interest, more interest showed in the school board meetings.
I, I hope so, the thing is.
When the tax bill go out.
But the, the thing is, I, I, I don't want to, the tax bill's going to be heavy, I agree with you, but the thing is, schools are a part of the community, and I'm, I'm not going to defend them, but the thing is, good schools are a good, I need to be, make a community good, and there are pros and cons these ways.
And what I'm going to say is, I know several good people on school boards, and I know people have tried to keep the numbers down as much as they can, so many costs are fixed, it's almost a frustrating position, because you could go on there thinking you're going to change the world, and so many costs are fixed, when you have different kids come into the school and different needs that are required by state requirements that you have to provide.
I pointed out at the school, I pointed out at the school board meeting, la, last year in school board, the school budget was artificially lowered, and the thing is, we saved a significant amount on our taxes to the residents a year ago. Why? Because the state offset, they gave some money, and they was, we never turned away money, it helped everyone in town. This year, that money dried up, so the school board rate was actually a little bit higher than anticipated, and as you said, people are going to feel it this time.
But again, if, you know, if you've got to cut costs, you know, first place everybody loves to cut costs is manpower, and if they got rid of a couple of teachers.
Yeah.
I, I'd hate to, you know, I'd hate to be the one to suggest that, because I'll get rocked.
And the thing is, and I don't, I don't want to speak to the school, but the thing is, it's a balance and accuracy, quality schools, the budget, they got to have a good balance.
I understand, but if you've only got X amount of dollars to work with, then you've got to make decisions to, to cut that, and workforce, you know, you know, cut the buses, make the parents deliver their kids to school, you know, it's, I don't think it's a requirement to have buses, I'm just throwing these ideas out there.
Oh, I know, but the thing is, the thing is, I, I would, what I would do is, you got to bring it to the school board, but they can't, they can't wait, they can't bring it to the school board a week before the meeting.
Oh, I agree.
It's got to be done during the budget season. And so I encourage you, get your friends, get your neighbors, get active out there.
You'll see if you have to take school board.
Okay, I have a quote to it.
Gentlemen, thank you for your time, thank you for letting me express my opinion.
And one more comment, please.
Just back to these, this educating yourself about what goes on in town. Most weeks, the agenda is actually posted online for the upcoming meeting. So you can check it every Thursday about five o'clock.
I usually try, if I remember, when we have to do before I leave.
That's what I said, most weeks, and sometimes they do change a little bit.
We'll definitely update it on Thursday.
Right, but my point is, you can go online prior to the meeting, and see if there's something that particular that you're interested in. You don't have to come to the meeting, you don't even have to worry about the meeting, but then you can watch this meeting after. You know what I'm saying? So it's not like it's not out there really accessible to everybody. It is. Like I said, some people watch them, some people don't care. But then, then you hear the complaints on Facebook about all the things, and they, they could have been sitting here talking to them, you know? I sit here, like he said, every week, and I'm the only one here usually, right? And then I hear, my wife is on Facebook, listening to everybody complain about this and that, and I'm like, I didn't see anybody there.
We, we, we dearly call the, the selectmen sometimes, because he's, he's the only member of the public who's available to comment on anything we do.
Yeah, and I'm a public comment. So my point is, you can go online on Thursday afternoon, late Thursday afternoon, and see what the agenda is about. You don't have to come here, but when the meeting's posted, it's usually posted probably around by the middle of the week. So by Wednesday, you'll see this meeting, okay? You can go on that meeting and see exactly what part you were interested in. Because you could skip forward to where you want to watch that, and don't worry about. So in other words, you could spend fifteen minutes a month just updating yourself, you know? And it's, it's there for everybody to see. Go on the town website and click right on that button, it's right there.
Thank you, Facebook thing's unfortunate, you know? I think people just get, they get complacent, and then they see their taxes jump up. And they, I mean, I'm not a supporter of Facebook and all that, I don't comment on it, but I think when they see a big jump like this year, they're like, well, what the hell? Now, they're more mad at themselves, they're frustrated, you know? Probably, because they, they don't, they can't get involved, and they don't want to, you know, get involved, that's.
It's, it's, the thing is.
You can't do anything about the school budget, no matter what, you're not going to stop sending twenty, twenty new kids to Bo, because, you know, everybody's complaining. They got to go to school, so there's nothing you can do about the school budget.
All you can do is stop selling land.
I think people are just frustrated sometimes.
Yeah, and the thing is, and the thing is, this whole environment of inflation is, is a, is a challenge for everybody. The thing is, I, I have a police officer here. The thing is, we came close, we were down two, we were down two this year. We, we, one in the pipeline, and then we just, was ready to hire another one, gone somewhere else for more money. And we don't have, we're not, we don't have the industry, the, the support, the tax base, where we can afford to pay top dollar. The thing is, don't get any ideas, sir.
I, I think everybody's, you guys, everybody involved, trying to do the right thing, obviously, you know? But it just, some people, people just get frustrated when they, they see, you know, they get hit from all, all sides, everywhere, and all of a sudden, their taxes are, you know, mine only went out fourteen hundred bucks.
You haven't given the final.
You haven't given the final one yet. No, but the thing is, one thing I joke with, I joked with the town administrator. I said, "Make sure you tell your friends in Massachusetts, come up here and spend the night up here, and buy a lot of the restaurants up here, because that'll help the women male stacks get more money for us."
Yeah, yeah, right.
All right, thank you, thank you for coming in and sharing your thoughts. Okay. All right, next item, MS two thirty-two. Lean, could you talk to that, please?
Okay, so every year, the board works on a budget to present to the voters, and we have to complete state forms. The warrant is posted with the MS thirty-six, which is the proposed operating budget. Then, when that budget is passed, it then gets merged into the approved or accepted budget, and that would be the MS two thirty-two. And that's one of the required documents that needs to be filed with the state twenty days after town meeting. So I'm trying to.
What else is due twenty minutes, twenty days after?
Town meeting minutes, and election results, and there are a number of several things.
So that falls on the town clerk?
Those are all town clerk related.
So it's already kicking the timeline for that?
Yep.
Okay. Could you, could you, please send an email to the town clerk, the minor of the twenty day deadline?
I can send her the, when the dates are due, and that way she'll.
That way, just as a reminder for her. Agreed, Dave?
Yeah.
Justin.
Lean, what's this on the back? It's up to town budget from prior year?
No, that's the one, I work with the software company, and we, we work on the budget worksheet, which is a proposed number. And then, once the vote is passed, it gets into the adopted column. And then the adopted column carries the dollars into the expense report, so then the departments know what they've expended.
So your budget total on the back is thirty-two eighty-one eight-ten? And the budget on this report is like thirty-four?
It's because it's including the warrants.
Okay.
And the bond, and.
So it seems to be the same number as town meeting, I just wanted to check.
Yep.
Okay, thanks, Lean. I just need a signature.
Okay, gentlemen, get your pens ready.
Did we read the motions by department, Lean?
Yeah, I'll let you do the reading, so. Thing is, this is the time of year where we do the, a lot of times, reappointment for committees and boards. And so we're ready to do that. Town clerk has been judicious in getting all the stuff put together for us.
This will be a little monotonous, but I'll start out here. I'll make a motion to accept Christine Flith, the Dunbarton Recreation Commission, for a member, term ending March twenty twenty-four. Also like to make a motion for Jennifer Adlini.
Adlini.
Adlini, for the, a member of the Dunbarton Recreation Commission, term ending March twenty twenty-four. I'll sign these, and I'll send them to you, Lean.
All in favor?
Aye. Same thing?
Different committee.
I'm going to give you back, keep, keep these, hold your mic, just. Okay, I'll make a motion to accept Linda Gray as alternate to the cemetery trustees, term ending March twenty twenty-four. And a motion to accept Judy Keefe as alternate cemetery trustee, term ending March twenty twenty-four.
I second. All in favor?
I thought there was another one in there. There's one for another, there's two on this. We did one a couple weeks ago, I'll do another one. No, she, did we? Oh, did we do it last week? Yeah, I think we did one. Cemetery trustee, yeah.
Okay, I make a motion to appoint David Knoll, Selectman Knoll, to the energy, to the vacancy in the Energy Committee. Term ending March twenty twenty-four, as Selectman represented on the Energy Committee. Do you second, Justin?
I'll second.
All in favor?
All right.
Abstain. I make a motion to approve George Holt, for a member of the Conservation Committee, Conservation Commission, March, term ending March twenty twenty-six.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye. I'll make a motion to accept Patrick Bounde as a Hazard mitigation committee member, March twenty twenty-four. Lean Como has a Hazard mitigation committee member, term ending March twenty twenty-four. Jeff A. Crosby, Hazard mitigation committee, term ending March twenty twenty-four. David A. Knoll, Hazard mitigation committee, March twenty twenty-four. Christopher T. Remillard, Hazard mitigation committee, March twenty twenty-four. Kenneth Swayze, Hazard mitigation committee, term ending March twenty twenty-four. Donna White, Hazard mitigation committee, term ending March twenty twenty-four. Jonathan Wigan, Hazard mitigation committee, term ending March twenty twenty-four.
I second those, okay. All in favor?
Aye.
You can do read that next.
Is there a name I can pronounce?
Yes.
I make a motion to, for Dave Knoll, to a member of the Highway Safety Committee, term ending March twenty twenty-four.
I did, hold it, hold my second, I'm going to have to read those two.
One at a time?
If you go off this list, they're all grouped together.
They're in different orders, though.
If you continue your motion with the other gentleman, same committee.
Christopher T. Remillard, member of the Highway Safety Committee, term ending March twenty twenty-four. Jonathan Wigan, member of the Highway Safety Committee, March, term ending March twenty twenty-four. Jeff A. Crosby, member of the Highway Safety Committee, term ending March twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Just on yours, or on your?
Just abstaining on mine.
You want to sign first?
You can give me another one, Lean.
Oh, you want to sign those, folks, okay.
Don't give me mine, okay?
I understand.
Make a motion to approve Thomas Cassano for Dunbarton Old Home Day Committee, term ending March twenty twenty-four. Kenneth Kerber, Old Home Day Committee, March twenty twenty-four. Mark Lang, Old Home Day Committee, March twenty twenty-four. Donna Larson, Old Home Day Committee, March twenty twenty-four. Megan Morrow, Old Home Day Committee, March twenty twenty-four. George Maskill, Dunbarton Old Home Day Committee, March twenty twenty-four. John Stevens, Old Home Day Committee, March twenty twenty-four.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion for Fred J. Mullin for Historical Awareness Committee, March twenty twenty-four. Motion for Leah Lee Mullin for Historical Awareness Committee, March twenty twenty-four. And William B. Nichols, Historical Awareness Committee, March twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that. Any discussion of those, here and now, all in favor?
Aye.
Make a motion for the following members for Planning Board. George Holt, Planning Board, March twenty twenty-six. Ronny Skelkum, Planning Board, March twenty twenty-six. Justin Knoll, Planning Board, March twenty twenty-four. Michael S. Kaminsky, Kaminsky, as ex-officio of Dunbarton Planning Board, twenty twenty-four.
All in favor? Aye.
Abstain.
All in favor except mine, obviously.
Yeah, I'm abstaining on mine.
That's so noted by the signature page. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Okay, following members for the Town Force Committee. Brian Como, Town Force Committee, March twenty twenty-six. And Jeff A. Crosby, Town Force Committee, March twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Term ending March twenty twenty-six. Following members of Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee. Doyle Meyer. March twenty twenty-four. Dom J. Larson, Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee, twenty twenty-four. Keith L. Larson, Dunbarton Town Hall Restoration Committee, March twenty twenty-four. David A. Knoll, Dunbarton Town Restoration Committee, March twenty twenty-four. Shelley Westenberg, Town of Dunbarton Restoration Committee, March twenty twenty-four.
I'll second. All in favor?
Aye.
I'll abstain on my own.
I'm going, I'm going.
You all said, you all said.
All right.
Thank you. Appreciate it.
Okay, make a motion for the following members for zoning board of adjustment. Matthew J. Delude, term ending March twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that.
That's it?
No, there's one more.
I retract my second. Okay, and James Elsusi, zoning board of adjustment, term ending March twenty twenty-six.
I'll second.
I just want to discuss you. Looks like one member is not returning, but they asked to, who are different members of all.
All right, all, all in favor of the, of the?
Aye.
Zoning board adjustment?
Aye, okay. You had one, like I thought I missed it. Make a motion. Allison Valleys, Deputy Treasurer, term ended March twenty twenty-six.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Did you see me missing any?
I don't think so.
I think we're good. Does it say we have signed a couple of your own paper?
You already did the cemetery trustee alternates.
Yes.
And then George Holt, I didn't hear him.
Yes, we did.
That was the list, the composite list.
Okay. I want the cover sheet for it.
It goes with a group of them.
After you have them.
Okay. Keep signing.
Keep going.
Okay, just on the agenda, you keep signing, this is going to be a non-action tonight. I'd like to continue discussion for next week, the second floor use policy for second floor policy use.
I'm agreeing with that.
Okay, Justin?
Yep.
Okay, sensible, continue that. Dave, you had me, I'm leaning a little towards your side.
Yep.
Good. A couple more members of the public talked to me this week, and I think that they are appreciating the fact that they wouldn't be charged for initial use of the room unless there was an issue.
Do you guys want to do a workshop about it? I feel like that, no?
No, I think, we're not quite ready for it, we're almost there, I think. We've kind of negotiated as we've been along, so I just want to check the point bulletins for you. Because even though we have a policy, we might have a quick bulletin point for you that makes it easier.
Yep.
Above and beyond the policy.
Yeah, what I didn't want to do is create such a burden where, you know, he's a full, another part-time person around us.
Right. And I think the money thing would have done that, or at least to begin with, so I think we'll take baby steps.
Well, I remember what they said on the planning board, where they used an exaction fee. It takes a, it takes a, almost administrative assistant to run the exaction fee, not exaction fee, impact fees.
Right, and so right now, what I'm doing is collecting the emails for the future requests for reservations, and I've told them that they're still pending, still work in progress, and as soon as it's completed, I'll be in touch with them.
Okay, Justin, can I continue, or you feel good? I'm going to talk about mailbox items now. I got a letter from the Office of Pennsylvania Law Office. She's concerned about, she just sent a letter of information request of snowfall and complaints going back to twenty sixteen. It's, Town Ministry has a fraction.
That's a right-to-know request, I have five days to respond, and depending on the amount of information she's looking for, which is back to twenty sixteen, I may have to come up with a, a time. amount of information she's looking for, which is back to two thousand and sixteen, I may have to come up with a time period that I'll be able to pull that together for her, so.
Okay, next item, I have an email from the transportation, transfer station manager. The plastic veil has been repaired, is back in operation, it was gonna be a problem if it wasn't working, but he got it fixed. Can crusher's gonna be wired next week, or second weekend in April, rather. There's some structural damage from, to the building recycling center, he's getting the handyman to look at it. The town truck is gonna go to the garage next week for warranty work. He's looking at a grant to help, see if he can get some dollars to offset the purchase of the can crusher. More power to him. Please let him work, tell him that he's a work with the grantmaster of the town. Maybe the grantmaster can send us.
It's a really simple, uh, he's already got all the paperwork he needs from me. So it's a really simple form that has the submit, and it's probably already.
Well, yeah, it's passed, it's okay, good. I just wanna make sure if his, uh?
Yeah, it's not one of the state.
Best of.
Grant is a simple application through, being here for the deal.
And just for the, for the record, uh, we have a vacancy in the, uh, transfer station, and he's looking for someone who would be willing to work Saturdays at the transfer station. I think that pays fairly well for a part-time job for one day, one day a week. Doesn't have to be every Saturday, but it could be frequent Saturdays, but he's looking out for.
It seemed to be just what Ken was going on to do. But not this was posted, I thought we already have.
I hadn't gotten there yet because he asked me to hold off until after town meeting, and now that we're there, I'm gonna meet with him and decide what we're, what approach he wants to go in.
Yep, you can do that this coming week, that'd be great. Okay, we have a, uh? Now, let's talk about, uh, we have some, for refinishing the town floors, this is some, this is some hem and a har, and how we're, wanna look at that. And we get some bids for some, uh, quotes for refinishing the floors. They're woefully needed, we, I don't think they've been refinished in like twenty-five years.
Hundred.
Okay.
I don't think they've, I'll go with one, Mike, 'cause I've met with all the goings on.
Okay, if you'd be so kind, Dave. I put some time in, um, at the end of last week and last weekend. I called eight more floor refinishing guys, I googled it. One's local in New Hampshire, to try and find some good companies. I didn't bring my book in tonight, but I called everybody that was fairly local, that seemed fairly large, that did this for a living, day in and day out. Good quality companies, Canopa, out of Hookset slash Bow, which I've seen their trucks around for the last thirty years. CNC Flooring. Anyway, I called all of them. And what I did is a general purview, the second floor, center floor is maple. And the stage is maple, and there's some fur on the back floor. And, um, and going through that with the different guys, I get quotes anyways from nineteen nine down to eighty-seven hundred dollars. And in reviewing the flooring, when I was going over the Town Hall Restoration Committee, I felt very bad going back to Cassano's for more and more money for that type of thing. They just took care of the fifty-nine hundred dollars worth of electrical work. For the wiring, for the, uh, stage lighting, for the AV, for the stage, and for the speaker system. And not only did they do that, but they, um, took care of all the additional outlets required in the back of the building, in the back of the room, if somebody wanted coffee or teapots back there. They made all of the outlets by the stage work, and additional light, uh, stage lighting and outlets in the back of the stage. So that whole second floor is pretty much done. And I wanted to thank that electrical crew, 'cause they've got donations, uh, you know, they're doing up there, several guys. That whole electrical crew takes, take our hats off to them, they've been there for a whole week now.
Alan Byron?
Alan Byron and Bob, uh, and Tom have been up there, several people helping, but those are the major people. All the old lighting was taken down by them, brought to the town dump. Taken apart, so, uh, and looking at that, I thought that, you know, maybe in our maintenance department, we could step up and take care of this. This guy here is out of where, um, every one of them, uh, there's basically twenty-six hundred square feet of flooring up there. And I asked for them to price out refinishing the flooring. All of them have Sanders now that are like no dust Sanders. And, uh, the three coats of finish, they said whether it was latex or oil base was the same price. I myself think the oil base is a better finish, although the new latex finishes by Bonner are just as good, they say, so. Either one of them, the cost was the same, so whichever way we choose on that, we go with. And it looks like most of these companies need anywhere from four to six days to complete it. This company out of where, uh, was eighty-seven fifty. And when I did these quotes to keep them apples for apples, I didn't even talk about the stairs unless somebody came up to look at it. I had another one from CNC Flooring, which, um, Alan Byron and Bob had both just had work done in their house last year, and said the guy was excellent. He'd been doing it for over thirty years. If you take his two sections of flooring only, without talking about steps or stairs, he was like an eighty-eight hundred dollars, just slightly above him. And he did give numbers that I thought were very competitive. When you walk into the doorway there, for some reason, there was probably an old door leak there, but there was, or they put the firewood there. The birch flooring was buckled there and had a lot of water discoloring. This guy was the only one that put in two hundred and seventy-five dollars to replace that birch flooring repairs, to get the water damage out. He did sixty-five dollars each on the steps going up to the stage. Thirty-five dollars each for the thresholds to be sanded, and seventy-five dollars each, which I get several quotes, all the same, coming down the other steps, coming into the older entryway. So.
So how much was the, uh, the staircase going up, was that separate?
Twelve seventy-five.
Two, twelve?
Twelve hundred and seventy-five. And I get several quotes around twelve hundred dollars for that, they're almost all identical.
Okay.
This guy here, KZ Painting Services, was sixteen thousand dollars. The two I had in, in, um, Hookset and Bow were ninety-seven hundred, ninety-seven fifty. And I had one more down in Bedford, and that one was twelve thousand dollars.
Just, just for the upper floor?
Yeah. And, well, that's all that needs to be done. I think Mary's floor needs to be buffed, but that's on the library budget. So, and going through these, um, these two are the lowest, they're within fifty dollars of each other.
I see that one.
This one here, CNC. And, um, I'm not sure the steps either weren't being done, only 'cause it's an emergency set of steps, but the flooring definitely does.
You're talking about the, the, the grand entry?
Yeah, the grand entry, I think that can be done at some point.
Or maybe next year.
Yes, but as far as the flooring done, I think he's at eighty-eight hundred, these guys are at eighty-seven fifty, just for the flooring.
I like the fact he's, he's doing the birch repair.
That guy's doing the birch repair, and both those guys have just used him and gave a great recommendation to him. I felt very comfortable with this guy.
It was nice how he laid out his estimate as well, it was pretty.
Yeah.
And he's using the dustless bags, right, for the sanding?
And he was the only one told me he needs a two-twenty outlet to sand the floors. And after he told me, I asked several others, and they said, oh, yes, we do. So the electricians put a two-twenty outlet out there for us.
Oh, nice.
Valen did.
Yeah.
So.
'Cause we obviously, I don't think there's one up there, there would have been one up there.
No.
This work includes newest technology in dust containment for a dust-free home. He has a whole pack for his best, so.
Okay. But he said he was, uh, you know, would come, come right in, and I, I think that that is the.
How far out is it?
Um, he said they, they all could start within a week's time. And he said, right now, we're kind of before the swing of things, so it'd be good to get on the agenda.
I think it's a good idea for us to undertake it on, on our own budget. I know you mentioned Tom was gonna do it with a volunteer group, but I think it's a big enough floor, we should just have it professionally done, so it's.
Well, and not just that, if, um, if you don't use a square sander, and you use a drum sander, um, you can make that floor all ripply and grooved, if you're not knowledgeable enough, don't use them day in and day out. I've done several myself. It's not something that can't be done, but the ones you rent don't have the dustless things that people have either, this technology, so. And they're not two-twenty, they're one-ten.
Right.
So, uh, my thought is we should, um, wrap this part of it up and have this done.
All right, with the anticipation of probably next calendar year, next, uh, budget season, we can do the, uh, maintenance of the stair, stairway.
Or see where the budget is at the end of the year.
We could accommodate if we have to.
So I would make a motion that we accept CNC flooring. And, um, the parts of his bid that we'll take is the main floor for seventy-five ninety-one. The weaving of the birch for two-seventy-five. Uh, we'll hand you the steps up to the stage, which are one-ninety-five. And do the, um, the back hall refinishing at twelve eighteen. And the threshold of the back hall would be seventy dollars. And the sixth one threshold will be sixty-five. Leaving off, which I'll make a note here right on here, leaving off the back steps.
Everything else is good.
Yeah.
I'll second that.
Any further discussion on that?
Nope. I'd say we get them in there now.
Yeah.
Are you ready for them now? I think that there's.
I'm, I'm gonna call them, I think that as soon as the electrician is done, we're ready.
Yeah.
And he said he'd be done this week.
Yeah, what are we gonna do with all those chairs in the middle?
I'm gonna have him do this back section in the hallway first, load the chairs in there, and then the stage in the center will be open.
Does it include the stage too?
It does.
Okay.
Yeah, so.
Make a motion?
Yeah, on the table, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Who seconded it?
I've seconded it.
Oh, you did, okay.
Okay. Okay, regarding, um, uh, there was a, uh, one of our contractor vehicles needed a snow, uh, snow extraction. I have no issues with, uh, with that bill as it came in, I had a moment, I like to discuss a non-public, but I discussed it with the road agent at Lenzon, I don't think, we need to discuss it here any further.
Okay.
Okay? Again, we got just another email from another resident concerning the voting. It's just very similar to the same concerns this chairman brought up earlier today. Make sure you get an opportunity to read it, I thought it was quite low rating. Okay, Lean, tell me about quotes for the, uh, for the cleaning now.
So I, I did make two phone calls, I checked with our handyman, see if that was something he would be interested in doing. He, he said he'd been out of town, so he was, he's planning on stopping by tomorrow, but what I do have there in front of you is, um, a quote from the cleaning crew that does our town office here. They are definitely interested in, um, doing that foyer area and the second floor.
Why don't we just hold this until we get that other information? I want another quote on this one.
I mean, it's, it's affordable, but I think if.
What, what do you think? I think it's, uh, the handyman we have has been doing a good job around town, I think, these people over here have been okay, not su, not superior, not poor, but just okay. Would you say, would you agree with that assumption? And the thing is. I would like to, um, maybe do something, let me show you guys what your thoughts are. I like these dollar amounts, and these are what I was hoping it would come in at.
Okay. I thought that was fairly reasonable.
And what I'd like to do is just make a motion for up to that dollar amount, is I had one other person, Linda Marku, mentioned she may wanna do it as well, and I was gonna tell you, and I forgot to tell you.
Oh, I did.
It's kind of my fault.
Okay.
Why don't we table this until we get all three quotes?
But what I'd like to do is, is make a motion for these amounts, and then let Lean just discuss them and make the decision. Or let them, it's cheap.
Okay.
We could table it for one week. I'll get, I'll get.
The only reason is, yeah, one week on her, the only reason is, I wanna, um, I wanna open up the base of it to Mary, so I'd like to get the floors cleaned.
We're, we're, for the public, we're jo, we're a little bit smiling here, because it's very, for once, we have a reasonable cost. We don't get that too often, so gonna hang on to my heart here.
Listen, if I read that, I'll, I'll make the motion for that amount, and then let.
No, we're gonna hold off, no one mounts. Okay, uh, we're gonna, why don't, I just make a motion, I like to make a motion, leave this decision up to the Town Minister of Appeal.
If it's within that price range, then that, yeah.
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 Oh, I need a second on that.
Second.
Okay, Lean, it's in your hands.
You said a second.
All in favor? Okay, your hands, but don't exceed the, the limits, that is a starting point.
Lean, I would like to, um, just because of people that are walking upstairs and downstairs, I'd like to try and have it cleaned once next week, if we could, if you do get somebody committed to it.
Okay, all right.
All right, we can start them right up, only 'cause, uh?
So what are we gonna do about here, keep the same time?
Yeah.
Yeah. Yeah. I mean, they, they still in the running, it's just, uh, it's good to let the, whoever's gonna be entertaining that, maybe do a quick walk through the showroom. Be on page.
That's what I did with this company here, is I walked over there and showed them.
Yeah, okay. All right.
I do have some questions, though, about that area. We have really, literally no storage space for the paper towels, toilet paper, and all that.
Yeah, I got a spot for them.
Okay.
Mary just doesn't want them in her area, so I did find a spot for them.
All right, um, tell me about the contract monitoring for the elevator.
Okay, so last week, we made a decision to switch companies to the contract monitoring.
Yes.
This company is thirty dollars a month, which is three sixty plus a thirty-five dollar startup fee. And, um, I think the last company we had was three twenty, so it was very much in reason.
Three thirty-six, three thirty-six, that's whatever, yeah.
So it was very much within reason of theirs, and, uh, I called this company, and within two days, Lean signed the final contract, they're up and running all set for the state.
When's the state inspection?
I was two months with the other company, it's still not, was still not ready.
It's, they, they check the operational?
It's all operational, yeah. Now, the state said they couldn't come until March fourteenth, and I've asked Rich from the elevator company to call them back. 'Cause he did say he would come Thursday or Friday this week. Rich didn't wanna call until it was up and running. And now it is up and running, so I've asked Rich to make one more phone call.
Okay, that's good. For the record, we were having trouble with the first company, for the public, uh, first company, and the elevators require not only a telephone, but a video of someone stuck in there. New, new rules and regulations by the state. And so we had one monitoring company, which said, we can do it, no, they can't.
There's a company we use for the rest of town, so we tried to give them the benefit of the doubt, and get it set up, 'cause they said they wanted to. But, but in addressing it, the upper people up in the company decided to do it, didn't tell any of their workers, so then we need, the state was calling up, they said, we don't have video response. Yeah, you do, you just don't know how to use it. Going back and forth, they never could get it running in the elevator, the state inspector didn't feel comfortable using their company.
So for a few dollars more per year, we get an actual company monitors.
They do over two hundred elevators in the state.
Okay. All right, now, Lean, could you talk to this next one? This is about the, uh, Department of Transportation.
Oh, so every year, I have to update, um, town officials on their list of the state manager, Department of Transportation. They require a town report, and there's a new law that says that, under that, um, chapter two CRF, part two hundred, subpart, yep, that a letter from the town has to be sent to them with their town letterhead stating that we did not receive funding exceeding the seven hundred and fifty thousand dollars, which would require another audit, so we did not receive that money. So this is just a letter following up and taking care of, uh, another requirement of this.
Administrative requirement.
Yeah.
Got it. All right, I'm gonna open up the public comment again.
No questions for us?
I'm good. Okay, all right, um.
Do my job, that's all.
Thank you. It's a challenge sometimes.
Yeah, sure.
Um, I'm gonna make a, uh, motion, we go to non-public?
Bring it back to the board.
Before the meeting, okay. Lean, I'm gonna let you go first.
I'm gonna pass on anything, anything further.
Okay.
I'll use you for some help here.
All right, I'm bringing back the Dave first.
Oh, I thought Justin was ready to speak.
You ready?
Well, I just have some updates on joint loss, we had a joint loss meeting, uh, Wednesday morning, and there was quite a few concerns that were brought up. Good portions of them are at the library.
What department were you at?
What do you mean? What department? Joint loss meeting.
Don't, don't you guys don't like picking an area you go to, though?
The transfer station inspection, we pushed off because the Department of Labor just had their inspection so recently. But we were here, we always meet here, and then we go off to the, which, whatever building.
They did the library, too.
Yeah, we did that one, a couple, few months ago.
This is just a discussion during our meeting that we found things that need to be brought to your attention.
Like Mary brought them to our attention.
Oh, Mary did, huh?
Yep. So. So um, I guess there's a first floor. Um, fire extinguisher right by the door. Was taken, installed in the elevator room.
I took it. I did need to be there for the state inspection. It was um, it was hung off of her wall.
Okay.
Because they were pla- replaced her wall.
Yeah.
So the state inspector was sitting there and the guy from the elevator company says. Dave, he says there's none down in the room, is that the one therefore it's sitting on the floor, I can see it through the door? To the library, I says, yes it is. And he hung it on the wall and we passed our inspection. So. So.
I don't really, I don't remember, John said there was, was one required there, back there, I don't know.
So that was, she seemed concerned about it. The new construction was removed and it's replaced.
No, no, no.
No, it was removed off the wall, it was gonna be re-hung. But they needed it as part of the state inspection that day, down in the elevator machine room, I said grab it and hang it on the wall and they did.
Okay.
Okay.
We passed our inspection, so now, I need two.
Okay.
Cause there's, there's none any longer upstairs, but there is a hook for one.
Oh yeah, we need one upstairs.
Okay, and I need one for Mary's again, so I was gonna, that was gonna be part of my thing I do this week, so. So two.
Can you get, is there any, can you get the fire chief to give us two recommendations and sources?
Yeah, we have a company that.
Yeah.
Okay.
So one's gonna be installed in, in, in the library.
Yeah.
And then the second one, they said there's a wall.
In the room upstairs, there's already a hook on the wall, yeah.
Uh, and then, uh, the next thing is the original exit light. Is still on the ceiling above, she, it's pointing to that.
Oh, pointing the wrong way.
Closet room with the other exit sign above the new door.
It all depends who you have, you might want some people in there. Thanks, Mary.
Is that, could a handyman remove that?
Uh, I don't know, we got Alan up there, is Alan still up there?
I'll have Alan take care of it.
And then just put a cover plate.
Yeah, cover plate, yeah.
I put thanks, Mary on here. I already told her I was gonna have to take care of it.
Well, she didn't want you to forget.
Of course not.
But is that supposed to be thanks?
Thanks, Mary.
Put that in here, give it back to her. Um, so another discussion we started to talk about is a keypad for the library and getting a master key. My suggestion was possibly putting a, a lock box on the outside for us to enter, because between the second floor. Um, needing a key to enter, trying to, when we lock the foyer. We need a key to enter. We're just trying to figure out how we're gonna get keys there, cause it's a big master key.
This is joint loss.
This is where all this stuff comes up.
Put X through it, does nothing to do with joint loss.
We'll just, that's separately, just.
Keys are, you know, life safety at whatever joint loss, right?
Yeah, cause John said he's taking the keys that are in that, cause he needs them.
In what?
In the stored area right now.
What stored area?
Well, I can't say.
Anyway, there's enough keys that are gonna be there, so you have the master key to the building plus the front door key. Mary has them, and now the keys to get in Mary's and upstairs are all touchpads.
Keypads.
That we, aware of, yeah.
So we just talk about the exterior doors for keys?
That's right, and maybe we should have a key to light?
And the reason why the keypad was taken off that door is because it doesn't operate with it.
Right.
So you can't add a deadbolt to it.
No, we're thinking of just a, just a lock box on the side, mounted to the side of the building with the key in it. So you don't have to have to carry a set of keys.
If you're listing your home for sale, you would have a lock box with a pin.
Because.
Store it.
Just say if we have a meeting or when we start to, you know, other committees use that room and the foyer is locked, they're gonna need to get in there.
Let's just talk about that one.
So we have to think about that as we progress with the second floor.
Give them to them and then have them bring them back to Lean after.
That's like, that three guys got final checkout.
Yeah, that's what I thought too, but.
Yeah, same thing again.
We can think about that, beat that one around, cause I did try the keypad on that, cause I was gonna put a generic code on that outside door of the foyer.
I see what you're saying, but the thing is, um, but it, you just walk over and get the key.
Think about.
Yeah.
Um. Library alarm sensor at original doors no longer working. Uh, she said the alarm company put in bypass. Should be moved to the new door entrance.
That's Pro Technologies gotta get there.
Yeah, that's right.
It was the um, the new, there's new exterior doors.
It's gotta move more than.
Yeah.
BK alarm has to move it?
Uh, BK alarm does not Pro Technologies.
Well, um, the alarms that we have are connected when the door, with the magnet at the top of the doors, entrances.
Yeah.
And those are installed with the alarm system that is monitored.
I thought it's Pro Tech.
Pro Technology, that's what they do, is they will install those.
Let's get a clarification, Mary.
Oh, so it's not the fire?
No, 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 this is.
It's just the.
Sensor.
The door that's no longer gone, that's gone.
Call Pro Technology for that part.
Okay.
I told her just have Pro Technologies doing assessing on the system, make sure everything's, cause they're the one that monitors.
Like, and remove, they move over the whole area?
Move wherever you need to do this.
Gotcha.
alarms and sensors. Um.
Sounds like a good choice.
Yeah, it is.
I'll get quotes, so that we're not surprised.
Also, the AED was brought up, uh. About potentially needing one upstairs in the second floor or in a, to be relocated into the common area. Cause Mary has one in her area now.
An AED.
AED, yeah. Before we go live, maybe worthwhile for the years.
Either put, put a second one upstairs.
For the heart?
Yes, so John is recommending, right now it's in stored in the downstairs bathroom, which is in that little hallway, uh, through the front foyer. The old bathroom. John's saying that, that front foyer section would be more than adequate and one, we need at least one for the building. Um, he doesn't think it should be at the top, and it should be in the locked library, but if you identify where that, the people can find it. That one on that, in that front foyer would be ideal location.
Instead of putting that old one out there, we should get a new one, is my thought.
I, I think it's, is it, I think it's pretty new.
I don't think it looks very new.
No?
I don't know, something, something to think about before we open up the upstairs.
But I think when I went through there, I thought it looked pretty old, but maybe I'm looking at the wrong.
Wouldn't John Williams know what to do?
I would think so.
He's got a recommendation from the fire chief on that one.
I wouldn't hurt, I don't think it would hurt to leave that one there for the library and have one out in the foyer for the.
Get a second one?
Second one upstairs.
Cause now is where you get those, you have to register them with the state, they have to know the, the codes on the AED.
Oh, really?
Oh yeah, and then we have to change the battery or the pads every so often, and they're like two-hundred bucks to replace the pad.
That could do much good if we have the pads that don't work.
Oh no, I understand, but I mean, when you start increasing the quantity, but Mark Lang has been very helpful from the volunteer fire department to. Inspect every single one that we have, he's, he's accurately, you know, taking the serial numbers, we reported it with the state.
This one is coming operational, which sounds it may be, every location may be just in a central hallway maybe already.
Yeah, see whatever John thinks, I don't care. Just have him get in touch with me about the location of it.
Okay.
Then the ongoing question about the water test.
Yeah, I, I wanna get that done this spring sometime, I wanna get all the building.
You know, they did have a water test there, right?
Two thousand seventeen.
Right, it's been a while, I, I'd be worthwhile to get it in the spring.
Yeah, and I think that, uh, you know, we'll look into it if it needs to be, have a small system put in there, then we will.
Right.
Test that each one of the buildings.
No, it all comes from that one.
For the record, we're being plagued by Dunbar and water, so we're gonna test the water in all the town buildings.
You wanna test it, each single building to see about the lines and.
In the past, that's how we did it, the source came from the library, well, but because it runs, it's uh, there's such a distance between. The buildings, they do test it from the faucet in the area.
That wanna make a difference for, if it's coming, it's more the aquifer, we're trying, with the, the ground well itself we wanna test. It, it's a, it shouldn't make, I mean, the only thing you should do, if you drink, if you use, if it's potable water, you all you do is run it for like a minute or two, get the water out. And then run it through the pipes, but the thing is, the water test is gonna be essentially the same, whether it be at the, the library or versus here. The only thing is.
Do you know how old those pipes are under the ground?
Yes, but that, that's why, if it's, if it's, assume it's lead, okay? You let the water run for about a minute before you start using it.
Well, longer than a minute to drain that one.
Yeah. Flush your toilet.
But you know what, this water has been tested before too.
Yes.
I'm just saying the minimal cost to just doing that.
Well, the thing is, it's gonna be, it's gonna be like maybe eight-hundred dollars for the testing all, all total.
No.
Yes, I don't think it's, I don't think it'll be that much.
Oh, if you use like second, um, I mean, the Nelson Labs, stories of Manchester, it's gonna be up there.
It's forty bucks and I did mine out.
I used to be forty.
I've been talking about, yeah, fire station, if you go do all the exterior, exterior buildings, you want the transfer station done, you want them all, you want all the buildings done, where we're getting, boys get water.
Well, I just wanna test, there's brand new bubbles, I just wanna test that one building for now. No, I work on one thing at a time.
No, I, I think it's a, I think it's out of a maintenance line, that we should maybe considering testing all the buildings for them, for our boys.
Prices, and if they're reasonable, we test all the water, because these are the places where your trusty employees are working.
Right. Alright, go ahead.
Okay.
Get some prices and.
Yeah, the thing is, let's target, let's target the month of April for getting that done.
April? April's gonna be a busy month for me.
May first?
Get some prices and see.
How about May fifteenth? Or do you have to, do you, I, do you want it before you have your soft opening?
It's not tax day, is it? Don't worry about it, one bit of soft opening.
I, I, I don't think you're gonna get many, there's not many water testing companies, the biggest one locally is Nelson Labs out of Manchester.
Well, we've always used this tent office, always used one in Concord.
Okay.
I have to look at, I have to check.
I don't want any one out there.
But I, I'd say we sample all, where, where employees exposed to potentially drinking the water. I, I, I eat a coffee, anywhere they make coffee. Agreed, chairman?
Is the school hooked up on the same wall?
No.
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 Just the fire, police, this office and the library, or one.
All these houses used to be and they've been taken off slowly. It's good, well.
But if they're, if they're lead pipes, I'm surprised you're even considering cutting costs on testing them.
No, we're not, no, that's where we, we just debated this, we're going, we're taking the high road here.
Well, the, the lead pipe. Might not tell you anything just by testing the water, it's not testing the pipe.
Well, the thing is, it's, it, it, the biggest problem Dunbar, there's two contaminants we worry about Dunbar, really this cut three. Arsenic is probably the biggest component.
Radon.
Radon is also a component, um, but radon is, is not really, we're not taking showers, being exposed to the showering water, emanating radon, so. Arsenic is the biggest one. And uh, lead pipes, old pipes, as Lean said, is probably the, the second number two. And the only, you can't, it's hard to pull up lead pipes in the ground, so you let the water run a little bit. Flush your toilet a little bit, then before you make coffee with the water, if you wanna do that. But for a transfer station example, we, I, I tell the, the manager, buy water, he likes the water bottles for his crew.
Yeah, I think the only one I'd like for sure to test is that one, cause we just put new bubblers in.
And the, and the bubblers, who uses the bubblers, children.
Yeah.
And we're concerned about that.
They're the ones that are affected with arson, more than us.
Yeah.
Yeah, the architect designed that, and I think at one time we asked him why they put those in there and then they got left in the plans and they're in there now, so.
But that's, that's our concern, okay. But the thing is, in the next sixteen days, we'll get that done, Lean.
Yeah.
Uh, another things, uh, concerns about the floor again, right here. About the safe going through the floor, so there.
In the corner of the building?
No, no, I think the windows, windows office.
Pretty heavy, um. Storage, um, safes, and so if we're looking to stay here long term. What we're hoping to see is a, a structural assessment to make sure that this.
I thought they did that before here.
No, but the uh, we have a, a engineer was gonna donate his time to get that done.
Right, but do, I guess we just need to get through.
We need to reach out to him again, I would say that we can plan there for mid, early summer.
So if, if you guys are okay with it, I'll just do the structural, and then if we find that the building is sound, then we can look at it for. Future changes, creating additional workspace or.
John said he would, uh, one of our local benefactors said he would donate his time to look at the building.
Yeah.
Who's John?
John.
John, Jeff.
Jeff.
Jeff Trexler, yeah.
Yeah, Jeff Trexler.
When did he say that?
Uh, back in October when we asked him, cause we thought we could have it for the budget, but didn't have it in the budget.
Okay. Uh, another thing was, we discussed about the panic buttons here, here at the town offices. Chief Emmerard had asked what the best way, or what the best choice was, the safety of the office staff. Um, so they had made a decision to go to the silent mode, and that has, looks like Lean is taking care of that.
Uh, yep, they had opening, uh, canceled today, so we've had our panic buttons changed from sounding alarms to silent. And um, we also asked, uh, we had, I thought about it while he was here and asked if there was um. A mechanism that would allow the other staffs in other rooms to know that a silent alarm has been sounded. He said that they have like a light switch mechanism, which is red and green, and if someone presses the um. Panic button, then the green light would turn to red, so you would know that even though you can't hear it, there's someone in one of the other offices. That's addressing something, of course, the police respond to that, but we could potentially take that as a step to protect ourselves if we had to.
Evacuate the building quickly, from this end.
Yeah.
Does Mary have one of those?
Um.
I thought she did say she did.
She does, she has a panic button, yeah, and then she also has the um, emergency bar, where she can lock the keys. From the inside so that no one can open that door.
Yeah, all them doors are like that upstairs too.
Yeah.
Okay. Keep going.
Uh. We had inspections of all the first aid kits, they all seem to be expired, uh, Chief Wiggins went through. A few of them, and they're severely outdated, um, so. Donna has looked into first aid kits and it looks like. Um, around six-hundred dollars for, to replace all those first aid kits that we need. We need a variety of ones, including vehicle ones, uh, ones for the buildings.
Oh, we, I, we made a motion.
Town, townwide, so.
And then the transfer station's requesting OSHA rated for his department, so.
Is that included in that first?
Yeah, yeah, it is, yeah.
Why don't you make a motion on that, Justin?
I don't have a.
Well, it's a, it's an estimate of around six-hundred dollars based on.
I think they're getting it on Amazon.
They, why don't, why don't you just make the, just make the.
Yeah, yeah, but we just wanted to let you know what.
We have consensus to go with that.
I think.
It's consensus.
Okay.
Alright. Justin?
Oh, we got a few more.
Okay, keep it going.
Okay, existing ladder in the town office closet, it's made of wood, and uh.
Don't tell me it's just from my damage?
No, uh, it's just unstable. Um, it's not helpful.
What, what type of ladder is it, is it like a step ladder?
Mm-hmm.
Yeah. It's a big question. There's different grades, I get the heavier grade, so we can handle heavier people.
Well, there was some, there was some discussion of.
Dave and Justin can stay off.
Sizes, cause I know, when I had to mess with that fire alarm when it was going off at one of the morning meetings, I had to drag the ten-foot ladder out, out of the. Storage, ship it over there, and uh, it's just tough to maneuver through the building, I know recently you guys pulled it through the selectmen's office. So they're just asking to purchase just a smaller ladder, um, they're unsure on the size right now.
Yeah.
I, I'd recommend probably an eight-footer rather than six-footer.
Uh, oh yeah, definitely, that was just, so our original, that one was actually left behind from the company that did the renovations of the bathroom. They took our good one, our orange and metal one, and left their ladder here, and that's what we've been using.
How long ago was that?
Uh, probably two thousand four, five.
You want a fiberglass one, wouldn't you?
Yeah.
Anything that's taller and safer, so.
Fiberglass would conduct electricity.
Just make a consensus to get it on order.
Yeah.
Have what do you think the other one throwing out?
Yeah. Okay.
We have, uh, speaking of wood ladders, there's a taller wood ladder that we've been making do with on the second floor there, cause there's fourteen foot high ceilings.
Uh-huh.
At some point, we probably should update that ladder too, cause all kinds of town peoples are changing light bulbs and whatnot, but.
No, no, LED is supposed to last lifetime.
I don't think we need, I don't think we need to do it tomorrow, but.
Already found that out.
Yeah. So they, they tell us our lifetimes, but the thing is, why do they still burn out?
Yeah.
Okay.
So you think that eight foot would do it for us here?
I think so, I mean, for me, yeah, because again, got to book on a twelve foot ceiling here.
I'd go, I'd go a little bit taller than that if you have to.
Well, there's already a ten fiberglass.
Okay, then, okay, small.
Yeah, and the thing is.
So they're asking for a shorter one, so I manage it.
A lot of times we try to manage on our own, if we have to change a bulb or whatever, a lot of times we can grab one of the guys when they're coming through.
It's like I was doing the fire alarm, but they're talking about changing the bulbs and lights here.
Light bulbs, we just replaced three of them.
Fair enough.
And they don't need as high.
What'd you do, you took that cover off?
Yeah, it was beeping at the morning meeting.
What's all of that?
That's the smoke.
It's a, got a nine, nine volt battery in it. It was a dead battery, and I called the alarm company, they were supposed to disarm it.
Which alarm company takes care of those for us, Lean?
Same as Pro Technology.
The reason I ask is there's four on the second floor of the library.
Well, we have them inspected annually.
I know they work.
Yeah.
They're yellow.
Oh.
And I was wondering what I was gonna do with them, I didn't realize you had nice white ones in this building.
Well, smoke, smoke alarms only last, and life expectancy is ten years on them, they need to be replaced.
Those are a hundred years old.
Not a hundred, but.
You know why, because the guy who installed these couldn't find a ladder, he had to borrow ladder, wanted to borrow the town's ladder to get to that ceiling, and he couldn't, so they never replaced them.
Okay, there's a ladder there.
Okay.
Cause they just did all the outlets and lighting with it.
Okay.
The sensor will be over there doing the other sensor.
They're only doing that other sensor.
That's a good idea.
Can you have just, and really, they're just covers, unless they put a hole in.
No, there's no, if it's more than ten years old, it's gotta be replaced.
Okay, there's four of them up there that are just bright yellow.
And it's on the second floor.
Yeah. And the ceiling has fresh paint, so ask them to wash their hands before they go touch one of these.
Okay.
Plastic gloves.
Yeah, white gloves.
No, but in fact, ten years is, is stretching it, if they're, ten years, they can't go beyond ten years.
Very young, like they were smoked on for many, many years.
Okay, alright, uh, second to last thing, I would like to, um, give us some homework for talking about the bid policy, changing the bid policy. I think we need to increase it due to inflation and things of that nature, it sounds like it's been tried to change in the past, um, due to inflation, but never actually was, um, I think we need to increase the amounts, um, so we all should think about that.
Right.
Maybe talk about it the next week. Um, and then also I propose that, uh, we go to every other week, uh, starting April first, instead of waiting till night. I don't think we have that much on the agenda.
I think, uh, I like to table that one for now, I, I think it's, um, I don't wanna.
What do you have tabled to the end of April?
There you go.
On second, Justin's motion unwrapped, because I think a lot of our time, the stuff on our mediums are short.
Tonight's a long night, but, yeah.
Alright, well, let's discuss, I, rather than vote on, I'd like to push it off the next week, maybe discuss it next week.
Well, we don't say yay or nay next week, because.
Next week's the last week of the month, last Thursday of the month.
Alright, we'll make a decision next week on that.
Then, then we'd be on a bye week, the following week, everybody skip, to, to follow the B schedule.
Okay.
So.
Was election day too much for us?
No, I just.
I vote yes.
Yeah, I just don't feel it, yeah, even, even the last few weeks prior to this.
And the town takes it to set up.
Okay, we'll be getting out before eight.
Fourth and fifth selectmen vote yes.
Something, alright, I, I, yeah, yeah.
Alright, um, some of the stuff we're doing is not out of need, it's cause we want to adjust things.
To you. Oh, anything else, I'm sorry, to you.
I think we should second that. No, I'm just, I'll wait till next week.
Okay, thank you.
Um, update on the town hall a little bit further, um, so all electrical is done, the person that's gonna install that, lighting and speakers.
Stage.
And A V stuff, stage stuff, is, uh, been notified of it, and has been out here this week to meet and live to show where everything is.
Okay.
So that part's all done, so I'll move on to doing the flooring, um, on the second floor, and then I think that will all be done about the same time that the state hopefully finishes up our inspection. I'm hoping to get the state inspection either Friday, tomorrow, or early, early next week to finalize that.
Okay.
It's already been done, he just has to come over for a five minute test, so.
Make sure that, yeah, videos are working.
Yeah, um, there are a couple odds and ends that I don't think will be done till warmer weather, the painting outside of where the old meter was taken off. Some vents way up by the roof.
You wanna get the original painted?
Uh, Chacon is gonna.
Oh, Chacon is gonna do it, okay. Okay.
Um, so, um, but other than that, I think all the odds and ends are done there.
When do you wanna do a, um, selectmen's sidewalk?
Mary's opening.
I think the three of you should go over there together and walk through there.
Why don't we do it before next week's meeting?
Six, you think an hour is enough, or a half hour?
Oh, no, a half hour, six thirty or so.